Well, expenditures are lower than expected. So this is the October report, so it doesn't include any of those strategic fund transfers that we did, that you guys saw earlier this month. So keeping that in mind, it shows that we're going to be adding 7.5 million, but we did 2 million in transfers, so it's really going to be about 5.5, which is still amazing, but keep that in mind. So revenues are still coming in strong. Since the last report, the major changes have been to property tax. We're thinking about another $350,000 extra to our estimated actuals for property tax, another 750 for sales tax, and another 800,000 for missed...
Welcome to the first city council meeting for January of 2020, January 7th. If you will all rise, we'll do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to depart from the agenda really quickly, so at the beginning of every meeting, there's that video that runs. And we have two new videos for the start of the new year, one for the Committee of the Whole, which the council switched to back in October, and then one for the council meeting. And so I'm going to ask Kim, before we do the roll call, to go ahead and play those. There's actually music that goes with them. And so if folks are watching, streaming it, or watching on TV 21, this is what they see. But it's a surprise to the council, so we're going to play those videos. So as you can see in that video, it highlights all the different departments in the city. And Committee of the Whole is where council receives those updates and briefings, has the opportunity to have conversation about all of the departments in the city. So that was the Committee of the Whole video, and then we've got the council video. So big thanks to Alex and our whole multimedia team for putting those videos together. A lot of fun. Okay, now we'll step back into the agenda. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Mouchot?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Changes to the agenda. Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ralph. Staff recommends two changes to the agenda, and both relate to the Cara on the Bluff Neighborhood Council. At the request of the neighborhood, we'd like to reschedule that for January 21st. So that would remove item 4A7 and item 8D.
Okay. Any other changes? All right, then a motion would be in order.
Summon.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda stands with those changes being made. Okay, we are going to move into public communications tonight, and I believe that's probably the reason why a lot of you are here this evening. We have some swearing ins of some new council members, our new judge, we've got passing of the gavel from our past council president to the new council president, as well as some appointments, and then recognition of businesses. So there's a lot going on in this meeting this evening. We're going to start, though, with our swearing in of our council members. We have three not-new council members and one brand-new one. So Councilmember Larmour, you've graduated to the not-new category. So with that, I would love to have Judge Franz come up, and if all of you want to join him down there, we'll do the swearing in.
Don?
I have an excuse.
Can we please raise your right hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill Boyce.
I am duly elected to the office of council member of the Kent City Council position number.
Can you bring that up, sir?
I've been duly elected to the office of council member.
I've been duly elected to the office of council member.
Of the Kent City Council.
Of the Kent City Council.
Position number?
Position number five.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Hey, next. Just doesn't sound like it. Okay, that's good. Otherwise, I'm not having to feel like it's really loud. Next, I get the honor of swearing in our new municipal court judge. Judge Gype, if you would join me up here. All right. Hello, I love this. Okay, we'll start with the swearing in, and then we'll ask you to say a couple of words, if that's okay. All right, if you could raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Captain David Gaddick.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of judge.
Of the office of judge.
Of the municipal court of the city of Kent.
Of the municipal court of the city of Kent.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
My pleasure to accept the trust and confidence of the council, mayor, council members. I appreciate your trust and confidence. I look forward to serving. We have a great staff there with our court administrator, Margaret Yetter, my colleague, Michael Franz, the other judge. I do want to point out a couple people who have appeared. Judge Laurel Gibson from King County District Court in Burien, who I worked with as a pro tem for quite a long time. I'd also like a shout-out, Chief Stran, former chief of police here in Kent, and his wife, Sue Stran. I worked with Sue when I was president of the State Bar Association and met the chief through her rather than through city, the other way around. But great people, thank you for coming out. So thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is passing of the gavel from our previous council president to the new council president. Councilmember, Council President Troutner, Council President Boyce, I'm not sure where we're at in that process. And I would like to give an opportunity to all the council members to say a few words, and you have something you'd like to present?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing that I have is for your wife, Debbie. I just... On behalf of the council, we just want to say thank you to Debbie for allowing us to, for allowing you to be here and participate in this. It takes up a lot of your time, and there are a lot of events that you participate in outside of our council meetings, where you have to miss things away from home. So we want to thank her and recognize her.
You look pretty.
I'm going to text her and let her know that they're from the council.
And then I know a lot of us got to speak at the end of December and say our thanks to you, but it's been an honor to sit next to you. Now, you're just a bit farther away, but I know that I can still call upon you when I have questions or things that I want to talk to you about. You have been someone who has not only done a great job representing us as a council president, but you have represented us in the region, and you have done a great job, and you're well-respected. One of the things that I picked up from a couple of the debates that I went to this last campaign season is you talk about your leadership and how that is important to all of us in the community, that you are a strong leader and you say what you're going to do, and that really shows, and that's why you're still here. So on behalf of the council, we have a plaque for you, and it says, "Bill Boyce, with sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the residents of Kent, council president 2016 to 2019, presented by the mayor and Kent City Council, January 7th, 2020."
That was my bad, not hers.
Absolutely, Councilmember Boyce.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember. It was an honor and a pleasure for me to serve as your council president. I think all of us really make this council strong, and it's not one, it's all of us, and we're all as strong as our weakest link. I also want to say to Tony, who I have worked with many, many, many years, and you are the right person at the right time to take us to the next level. A lot of respect for you. You're always, always on top of your homework and on top of your game. You would do well. I am here for you. Anything you need, you let me know. But you are the right person to take us to the next level, and we all going to rally behind you and make sure you are very successful. So thank you, and I look forward to working under your leadership as well, too. Thank you.
Any other council members have comment? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and go. Bill, I'm going to call you that because we've worked together a long time, and I will tell you, in my first two years as mayor, having you as council president made this job so much better. We worked very closely, we both committed to that from day one, and I could not have asked for anyone better to navigate all of the things that we've accomplished in the last two years. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your commitment to this council, and making sure that we're all doing the right thing for our city. And that's something that you say all the time. It's not about me, it's not about what I personally believe, it's about what's best for Kent. And that is advice that I think all of us need to be reminded of and remember in all the decisions that we make. So thank you very, very much.
I do want to say thank you as well, too. I really enjoyed working with you. We work closely together, and there's no secret with you. You really like putting things out in front of us, give a chance to think about it, no surprises, and that's what I like most about you. And we are a team, even though you're the mayor, we work as a team for the whole city. So we will still work together, not the council president, but we will still continue to be close, so thank you for your leadership as well.
Council President Troutner, I want to say congratulations to you. Your colleagues have put their faith in you because you have shown leadership since you have come onto this council, and you have also shown the, that your integrity and who you are shines through in the decisions that you make in doing the right thing for the city of Kent. I do believe that the council made the correct decision in this. I am looking forward to working very closely with you as we go into the next two years. Same commitment that I made to Council President Boyce, open, transparent, available, and no surprises. So looking forward to the next two years. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things that I've enjoyed watching, both of you, all three of you, work so closely together, but I think it's just an excellent example for those of us who might follow. I'm not running. But Bill, I just appreciate you being always prepared. Your good leadership skills are really, really amazing. And Tony, if you have any questions, I have Bill's phone number.
Nice, thank you very, very much. Okay, all the official things are done, everybody's been sworn in, is in their, are in their new chairs, and we are ready to move on in the agenda. So thank you all for all of this. The next thing on our agenda is Employee of the Month. So our city employees get together and they, we have a nomination process where they can nominate their coworker for doing exceptional things, whether it's an extra project or just how they perform their job on a daily basis. And it's important, these nominations come from their peers, and that means that you are doing outstanding work and that the people you work with and work around can recognize that. So I am very, very proud to announce our January Employee of the Month, and it's Heather Martin. I know that Heather's here. Okay, there she is. I'm going to read a little bit of background, and then Sean, would you like to say a few words? Okay. Heather was originally hired June 16th, 1998, as a temporary house painter in the Planning Department Office of Housing and Human Services. On September 16th, 1999, she became a temporary utility maintenance worker in the sewer division for the Public Works Department. She was hired on September 1st, 2000, as a water distribution maintenance apprentice. That's a lot of words to say in that sentence. She was promoted to a maintenance worker 2 in March of 2001. In July of 2004, she was promoted to a maintenance worker 3. You see a pattern? She's working her way up, doing excellent things. And a year later, was promoted to storm inspector for the Utilities Division of Public Works. Her job was reclassed October 1st, 2018, to her current position as a conservation coordinator. Heather oversees and participates in the development, implementation, and coordination of the city's resource conservation programs, which includes solid waste and recycling, water conservation, water quality, conservation education, household hazardous waste, and critical resources area. I want to say a big congratulations to Heather. I think I might have met you way back in that maintenance worker one day, so known you for a long time, really proud of the work that you do for the city, and on behalf of all of your peers, congratulations on being our January Employee of the Month.
So working?
Yep.
You hear me? Okay, thank you very much, Heather, congratulations. What can I say? Heather is very deserving of this distinction. Few of the words that came to mind for me when I was thinking about what to say for Heather were integrity. Heather always does what she says she's going to do. I trust her to always do the right thing. Caring. Heather not only cares about doing a good job, but she shows caring in all her interactions with her coworkers and her customers. Teamwork. Heather is a great teammate. She always is willing to jump in and help. I really do feel lucky to have you on our team, Heather. Her work ethic and her enthusiasm are contagious, they really are, and this is such a well-deserved distinction and honor for you. So congratulations, Heather, and thank you very much.
Congratulations, Heather. Right, we are going to move on to a series of appointments. The city has several citizen committees or commissions, and the first one we have is Land Use and Planning Board. Land Use and Planning Board is a group of citizens that come together to conduct public hearings and make recommendations to the council regarding things like land use, our comprehensive plan, all things that are related to where we can build single-family homes or multifamily homes, grocery stores, gas stations, those kind of things. There is a long history of folks coming out of Land Use and Planning and onto this council. I think I was about the fifth one that I am aware of that started on Land Use and Planning. It's a great group, a wonderful way to learn about the city, but the thing I am loving about the applicants that we have are, is the knowledge and information they're bringing to the board. So very, very grateful for the commitment for these folks. We've got a reappointment and two new appointments, so I would like to request the council, it's on your consent agenda tonight, to approve the appointment of Joe O'Toole, Dion Dipmar, and the reappointment of Kathy Jones to the Land Use and Planning Board. I'm going to say, if anybody's in the audience, I'd like to come up and introduce themselves, that would be wonderful. Don't mean to put you on the spot, but just...
Looking forward to contributing my efforts for the betterment of the city, the community, my neighborhood, and...
Nice, thank you very, very much. Okay, and like I said, the formal appointment will be under the consent calendar. So we also have a couple of reappointments. Let me get to the right page here. For our Parks Commission, we happen to have a council member that came off Parks Commission, so there is an opening there, as well as some reappointments. Give me just one second. Oh, it's, hang on. Technology, I apologize. Okay, we're going to go old-school. So I've got one new appointment, and that is Caitlin Hepworth, and then two reappointments, Rick Minatoli and Jennifer Ritchie, to the Parks Commission. And the Parks Commission is the group that looks at, reviews all of the different things that are going on in our Parks Department, property-related, as well as recreation... that are going on in our Parks Department, property-related, as well as recreation. And they advise the council on things that are happening in the parks and recreation realm. So, really happy to have this group providing that input to the city council. If I've got any members here that are being appointed or reappointed that would like to come up and say a few words, that would be wonderful.
Hi, my name's Caitlin Hepworth. This is my first appointment ever to local government, which is very exciting. Really looking forward to being an activist for our community and to represent the benefits of the city council in the future.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you. I know I saw Rick back there. Do you want to just wave?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to serve the city of Kent. It's a pleasure to serve on the Parks Commission. And if you folks haven't been to a Kent Park today, you've missed out. They are wonderful. Your day would be better if you visit.
Thank you. Now, I don't know if Jennifer's here or not. Okay, perfect. I want to extend a huge thank you to everyone that has stepped up, applied for, and been appointed to a committee or a commission here in the city of Kent. It is what makes us a better city and provides that direct link between our residents and the council. So, thank you very much for your commitment to Kent. Okay, the next item on the agenda was the Neighborhood Council. So, just maybe as a little bit of a teaser, at our next council meeting, we will be recognizing our 50th Neighborhood Council, Councilmember Boyce. Bill laid down that challenge probably a couple of months ago, and we've been slowly getting there. We will be at 50 at our next council meeting, so look forward to that. All right, we are going to move on to our Torcliff Central's ninth, I cannot believe it's ninth, Annual Turkey Challenge results.
All right.
It's crazy that feels like just yesterday, but then it's also something that feels like it's been a part of this community forever.
I know, and this year is going to be 10th, so we're going to go big.
Have to do some big celebration.
Right, exactly. All right. Whoops, one too many. So, I want to just start off by saying thank you so much to the city council. Thank you so much to all of the participants, everyone that's contributed, that's shared, that's helped to donate to the Kent Food Bank and to the annual Kent Turkey Challenge. We're really excited because we hit a major milestone this year, and we got over $175,000 collectively raised through the Turkey Challenge ever since its inception. So, you know, we're really excited to hit that number. It's a massive number to do, and we've done over 66,000 pounds of food as well to support the food bank. So, just as a little background, in case anyone's not understanding or doesn't know the origination of the Turkey Challenge, a few years ago, the Kent Food Bank lost their funding, or majority of their funding. And so, you know, we decided as a company that we wanted to help the community, help the food bank, and so we started getting other people involved. And so far, it's grown massive. We had over 75 businesses participate this year. Everyone is just so willing to help out, you know, Kent as the community, the Kent Food Bank and everything, because everyone here is, you know, really great and supportive of the community. So, this year, we did, or this year and every year, we do a coloring contest, and we had some pretty awesome prizes for some of the participants who joined us. And so, we had, each school had a winner, and then there was one non-school winner, and they won an electric scooter, which is cool. Obviously, we gave that to the parents, so they can determine when the kid gets the scooter, because, you know. So, from Springbrook Elementary School, we had Fario win with theirs. And this year, we decided to do something new and had them write what they were thankful for as well.
I love that.
Yeah, so we included some turkeys, and we let them vote on next year's logo as well. So, Fario, age 11, from Springbrook, congratulations. And then, also for our non-school entries, we had Aria, who's age nine. And so, obviously, we'll be contacting all the winners and getting them their prize and everything, but it's, you know, something that we like to do to make sure that not only adults can donate and participate in the Kent Turkey Challenge, but also kids, too. So, all right. And so, these are just a couple of photos from when we dropped off all the donations and everything. Total, we had about six or seven pallets of food that we brought over. And for Thanksgiving, the Kent Food Bank was able to provide families with full Thanksgiving meals, and that includes turkeys, chickens. We had two pallets of pumpkin pies donated from Maplehurst Bakery, which was incredible, potatoes, onions, all kinds of fresh fruit, including apples, milk, eggs, and pretty much anything to make a full Thanksgiving meal, which is what our goal is, is to make sure that those who are less fortunate are able to enjoy Thanksgiving with their families. So, to get into the top winners, we like to award the top five organizations and businesses just to kind of, you know, keep that competitive spirit going. And so, we'll start with the monetary donations. So, in first place was Everly Vivian. Let me see. Where? Got you. There's so many. All right, come on up, Travis. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all your guys' support every year, so. All right, second place was Pacific Power Group. And I think some of them were going to be here? Yeah, come on up. All right, third place was Pegasus Northwest. Fifth place was Chateau at Valley Center, both the residents and the employees. Fifth place was Kent United Methodist Church. All right, and then, the top five food donations. First place was Grasslake Elementary School, which was fantastic. They donated 1,800 items, which is crazy.
Wow.
It was fun picking it up. So, thank you so much, Grasslake. We also have the Seattle Tacoma KOA in second place with 1,700 items. Come on up, guys. Before I forget, I just wanted to show everyone the trophies, because we did something fun this year. So, we did glass ones this year, which are exciting, and they have the nice Turkey Challenge logo on them. And so, yeah, these are what the trophies look like, so. Of course, definitely.
This is my student council president and vice president.
Very nice.
Way to go, Grasslake.
Grasslake, okay, perfect. Awesome. Oh, wait, here, just... Awesome, perfect. All right. Sorry. Thank you so much, you guys. All right, and then, so, Seattle Tacoma KOA, is no one here? Okay, perfect. Kent CrossFit was third place.
Hi. Hi, Jennifer.
Yeah, of course, definitely.
Let's try to avoid the picture.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, you guys want me in, too? Okay.
Are you ready?
Ready. Thank you. Thank you. All right, and then, fourth time was Anytime Fitness. And then, last but definitely not least, with 436 items, was Blinker Tavern. So, all right. So, like I said, I just wanted to say thank you so much for everyone who participated. This year alone, in 2019, we helped feed 573 families and over 1,600 people. So, all of your donations, all the participants, they really go towards a great cause to help make sure that the community has the food they need for the holidays that we all love to celebrate together. So, just wanted to say thank you again so much to, like I said, the city council for all the support you guys have shown us, to all the organizations, and we look forward to a very exciting 10th anniversary this year. So, we'll be back in October.
I just want to say, Torcliff, you guys are the catalyst for all this, bringing out all of this amazing, amazingness. I mean, I think that's going to be the right word for this, in our residents and businesses in Kent. If it wasn't for you organizing this and bringing everybody together and supporting this year over year, this wouldn't be happening. And there's 573 families that wouldn't have had an amazing Thanksgiving dinner. So, from the bottom of my heart, and I think I can absolutely speak on behalf of this council, thank you so much.
Of course, it's our honor, so.
You guys are amazing.
We love being able to host it, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on in our agenda to community events. Council President Troutner, do you have some events for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Upcoming events happening at the Assesso Showar Center, the Tacoma Stars play California Express on January 10. The Seattle Thunderbirds will host Everett Silvertips on Saturday, January 11. They will also host the Regina Pats on Friday, January 17. And then, Seventeen, which is a K-pop group, will perform at Assesso Showar on January 23, and the tickets are currently on sale. Seattle U men's basketball will play February 1 and March 7. And then, another K-pop supergroup called Super M will perform on February 4. And Joe Coy, excuse me, a Tacoma native, is returning to Assesso Showar on February 16 and has added a second show on February 17. So, tickets for that show are also available. Toby Mack, a Christian artist, will perform February 28. Camilla, a Mexican pop band, will perform March 20. And Laura Dagel, who is also a Christian artist, will perform April 25 and has added a second performance for April 26. Rend Collective, a Christian group from Ireland, will perform April 29. And then, X League, formerly known as Legends Football League, has announced their 2020 schedule. Seattle Thunder, formerly known as Seattle Mist, have two home games at Assesso Showar Saturday, July 18, and Saturday, August 15. So, tickets for that are also on sale. So, a lot of things happening at Assesso Showar Center. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. On February 13, we have Vijajit Vishavich Singh, the sick Captain America. For those of you who are wondering when our next Equity and Inclusion Series event happens, this is it. It's going to be on February 13 over at Kent Memorial Park. So, you can mark your calendars for that now. It's going to be 7:00 PM. This coming Thursday, day after tomorrow, right here in this room, we have the Fourth and Willis Roundabout Open House. So, if you missed the last one, or even if you did make it and you have more questions, there will be people here who can answer your questions and give you information about the new roundabout that we're going to have out here at Fourth and Willis Streets. That's 5:00 PM this coming Thursday. We have A.J. Croshi coming as part of our Spotlight Series on January 17, and Seattle Rock Orchestra on February 8. Those are both part of the Spotlight Series through Kent Parks. So, that is it for us. Lots of good things going on in the city.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, we will move on in our agenda to item letter C, Economic and Community Development Update. Joining us is Bill Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to deliver the update for this quarter from Economic and Community Development. So, if you didn't see the news yesterday, Blue Origin had a great ribbon-cutting event in our community, opening their new headquarters, the Gerald O'Neill Building. There's a picture of the mayor cutting with the ribbon with the CEO, Bob Smith, and the sort of dignitaries. And in the top right-hand corner is an image of the Blue Moon Lander that fills the hall, and I would say it's kind of a grand hall. I was very impressed with the tensile membrane structure that we've been all familiar with being constructed over the last 364 days. On the inside, a very pleasing atmosphere, feels like a Class A office with soaring ceilings and nice accoutrements and fixtures, and a brilliant mock-up of the Blue Moon Lander that Blue Origin will be working on at this headquarters as part of Project Artemis, which is NASA's intention to bring the first woman to the moon. Blue Origin expansion is a very important economic story, of course, for the city of Kent. The new headquarters is already about full with 1,500 new employees. Their total in Kent is over 2,500, soon to be go over 3,000, and then beyond that, dot, dot, dot. If you go back 10 years ago, when they were 300 employees, and consider that they're near 3,000 now, and most of that was in the last couple of years, you can appreciate the very significant surge of hiring that's taken place with Blue Origin. Furthermore, I've heard that they are spending upwards of $200 million in Washington State aerospace supply chain. So, the economic impact from this is quite considerable for not only our community, but for the state. And I think it really builds upon the legacy that we have here in our community as being the place where lunar vehicles are invented and created, not just lunar vehicles, of course, but all of space commercialization, going back, of course, to Kent Space Center and now today with the Blue Origin new headquarters and facility here. It's very important to note that the Kent Valley is the home of the intellectual property of space. People associate Florida with the Space Coast, and people associate the launches that happened there, because that's where the video gets taken of the rocket going to space. But all of the research and development and manufacturing work, a lot of that, that happens right here, actually, a very significant portion of it. And in the case of Blue Origin, the most significant portion of it, and I think we should be immensely proud of that, and thinking about how having that complete spectrum of employment here in Kent really creates an opportunity for us. Furthermore, talking with the Blue Origin folks about the types of employees that they have in need, I think it's important to note that it's a full spectrum. It's not just sort of the, I mean, they do have a welder with a PhD candidate as a part of their portfolio, and the avionics expert, but a lot of what they have in demand is traditional manufacturing-type jobs and traditional manufacturing skill set, whether that's a manufacturing production engineer or someone in quality control. It's a very large manufacturing outfit, as well as a research and development hub. So, what that means in terms of what we need in terms of our skill set and being developed from the local workforce is something that we should keep an eye on. Furthermore, I want to give you a quick update on Kent Valley initiatives. We're meeting this week with our partners in the cities of Renton and Auburn and Tua Wulla to talk about next steps on Kent Valley branding. I think it was pretty significant the other day at the Blue Origin ceremony. The CEO talked about a vision of a Silicon Valley of space. I think that's Kent Valley. I think that's quite clearly Kent Valley. We're also working, as you know, on Rally the Valley Project. We're currently drafting development standards. We're sort of in the final drafting of design guidelines. We're working on an inter-urban trail study, things that help support, give support to the types of employees that we have currently in the valley, but also want to recruit to the valley and retain in the valley. So, some of that infill project. Moving forward, I want to transition in a moment, just talk about 2020 in downtown Kent. We've been working on the new contract and new scope and new work plan for Kent Downtown Partnership for the next year. We're going to be supporting the work of the four committees of the Kent Downtown Partnership, which includes events. There'll be 13 to 17 new community events next year, including the Cajun Food and Musical Festival, new cleanup events, new wine and art walks. We're going to be working with Green River Business College and Kent Downtown Partnership to stage business workshops for our downtown businesses in our downtown. We're going to be working with local businesses in our downtown restaurant scene to produce and promote our first restaurant week. We're going to be working with the Design Committee to look at lighting three new downtown businesses, as well as the usual work that happens in terms of supporting beautification of street poles with flower baskets. And we're also going to be working with the Outreach Committee to make sure that, encourage that there are more cultural events in downtown that are relevant to the broad spectrum of cultural community organizations that are throughout Kent. So, those are some of the items that will be deliverables to the committees in the Kent Downtown Partnership, and I'm working with Gaila Gutierrez, the executive director, on that. Some of the things that we work on in the city when it comes to downtown is sort of the longer... the longer, the conditions, the conditions that set the table for economic development. And I just wanted to put forward a statistic for people to consider that within a certain walking distance of second and meter, in this case, 20 minutes, the disposable income available to households is significantly less than the disposable income of the city as a whole. This has a real impact on what we can expect businesses to see as an opportunity and then property owners to see as an opportunity when they're making investments. This is how much income is available for those businesses to pursue and grab hold of. Another statistic to share with you, not on this slide, is that something to consider is within a five-minute drive of Burien's City Hall, there's $643 million of expenditure available to the downtown of Burien. Within a five-minute drive of here in Kent, there's $366 million, about half as much. So, I bring this up because I think one of the things to point out, downtown needs both, needs more available income in the downtown. And I think a potential blow that we're going to talk about later today at other business in advancing that is bringing a hotel into our downtown. That helps both the Valley and helps both companies like Blue Origin that are relocating hundreds or not thousands of workers into the area and really need hotel room stays. But it also helps our downtown and building out the downtown because all those people staying at the hotel will also be potential disposable income to our downtown, our folks downtown. And the other thing that we should be thinking about is that we're proceeding with setting up the remainder of the five acres of the Naden for avenues, site assemblage for redevelopment, is what catalyzes more growth in downtown and brings more income downtown. And I think jobs do that, and I think jobs help attract more housing. And those are some of the criteria that we think would be supportive of growing our base downtown. So, we need more in every category. And I think one thing to also point out about our downtown is that we have interesting retail and entertainment in our downtown today. We have Excesso Showers Center in Kent Station. We have interesting, not interesting, but we have significant government service with the Millane Justice Center and the Courthouse. And we have a lot of service retail that's in and around the area that can support amenities for residents downtown. What we don't have in our downtown is primary industry. What we don't have is the types of jobs that bring in income from outside the area downtown. And I just want to reference back to some of the discussions that we've had over the last year, going back to spring of last year, where we talked about loosening the zoning for advanced manufacturing in our downtown core. And we've been sort of setting the table, if you will, with this hotel and with the changes to the zoning to the, to set up ourselves up to be in the best position possible to take a site that's at the confluence of two state highways, within walking distance of a light rail station, to bring an employer into the downtown and bring some of the people into our downtown that might have some of that disposable income. That is one potential path that we might be setting ourselves up for right now. And I think it's economic development's charge at this point to continue in market, getting out the process for marketing the disposition of the remainder of the property. So, we've taken some steps, and I think we've done some good research, even in the Rally the Valley Project. You heard back in December from The Economist from Echo Northwest about the competitive advantage and significant demand in manufacturing that the city of Kent has to, I think, realize that. I don't want to get ahead of the purchase-sale agreement I'll be bringing later this evening to other business, but I have a couple of points up here on this slide. The purchase-sale agreement is to authorize a signature of that agreement, not to actually close it. We're actually just entering a new phase of negotiation, which is the development agreement, which will actually nail down some of the details. You'll notice that the image on the left is the same image I've been sharing for some time of a watercolor of what a hotel might look like on the site and not a new rendering. That's because we're entering a new phase of negotiation around the development agreement that would fix details of design. In your packets for the PSA, you will see a rendering and a site plan and some floor plan images of potentially a Hilton Garden Inn with 130, 60 rooms at this site. But all of that is negotiable, all of that is subject to change. And so, don't want to build too much expectation around what are exhibits for sample discussion and purchase sale agreement. With that, any questions?
Any questions for Bill? All right. Thank you. So many good things happening all around the city of Kent. So, our next item on the agenda is reports from committees, council, and staff. And this is an opportunity for council members and staff to share with you some of the work that they're doing outside of these council meetings and the committee of the whole meetings. All of our council members represent the city on regional committees, meaning that that ensures that Kent's voice is being heard in all of the discussions that are happening outside, both inside and outside of Kent. If we are not at the table, there's a saying that you could be your what's for dinner, and that's the last thing we want to be, right? We want to be the leader in what's happening and making sure that, that we're getting our fair share of what's going on in the region. So, I will start. It's been a quiet couple of weeks with the holidays, so most, most committees and other meetings were, were in recess for that, those two weeks. I do want to build a little bit on what Bill said about the opening, grand opening of Blue Origin yesterday. It was a pretty amazing event. So, we had Congressman Heck Kilmer and Adams, our local Adam Smith there, as well as Representatives Tina Orwal and J.T. Wilcox that attended that event. It was, it was pretty amazing to be inside that building and remember that 364 days ago, they were just starting construction on that site. So, 233, 234,000 square feet of what is really Class A office space. They have moved people into that building and are hiring at a rapid pace. Very proud of the work that Blue is doing, their commitment to Kent, their commitment to making sure that Kent is their headquarters and will remain that way. I was honored to be able to thank them at that event and then, then formally cut that ribbon. So, if you get a chance, that building is on 76th in between 228th and 212th. You cannot miss it. It is that bright blue. I've been told you can see it when you're flying into Sea-Tac. I just keep flying in from the wrong direction, but pretty, pretty neat space, and we are very grateful that Blue Origin has chosen to call Kent home. With that, I'm going to look to my right to our Chief Administrative Officer for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. My written report is in the packet. We do have an executive session this evening, and the subject is collective bargaining. Expected time is about 10 minutes, and there will be action when we reconvene in open session.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a couple presentations during workshop today, and the first one was really interesting. It was from Public Works, and it was on our new storm water permit system. They've added a few things to it. And back in 1972, the Clean Water Act issued an action that allows cities to discharge water into streams and lakes. Through this, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is known as NPDES, oversees that to make sure that cities are following rules and making sure that whatever water is going into the streams and lake isn't full of pollutants. These permits that are given to cities last for five years, and the city of Kent received their latest permit for this back on August 1st of 2019. So, we heard about different pollutants that all of you are probably aware of, fertilizer, pesticides, auto fluids, fat and oil that come from restaurants, litter. When you think of the homeless community, garbage, needles, and debris that are left behind, all of this can cause water to get into our streams and our lakes. And they can cause algae, they can cause problems for the fish, and they cause toxins. So, we have a great Public Works Department and employees in our city that are going around and inspecting and educating our community. They are inspecting drains, they are working with businesses, and then they're reporting back to the NPDES and letting them know that we are following the rules. Big piece that we heard about was education, education, education. They are working with our young people, they are working with schools, they're working with businesses, and they're working with our residents to provide all different kinds of information on how you can make sure that what you're doing in your home or your business is not polluting our lakes and streams. So, a lot of great information, and I hope that somewhere along the way, we bring that into the community and you get to learn about that yourself if you haven't already. We also heard from Public Works on the new bag ordinance that will take place on March 1st. And the council back on August 20th voted to ban plastic bags in our community. When retail establishments put this into place on March 1st, you have to bring your usable bag in when you do your grocery shopping. If you do forget your bag, you may pay for a bag that is recyclable, and that will cost you eight cents. And just to be very clear, that eight cents goes to the retailer to pay for that bag. It does not come back to the city in any way. So, just something to be clear about. There are exceptions. When you buy produce, those bags will still be there for you to use. When you go to get your prescription, they will be using bags there along with dry cleaners. And when you go to get your takeout food, they will have bags. So, there are some exceptions to this rule. There are currently 37 cities in the state of Washington that also have a bag ordinance. And throughout this process, the city has been communicating in various ways. We've been showing videos on Channel 21, we have letters that will be going out, we are working on social media, we're working with businesses, and we have information on the website that talk about how you can reuse bags. The program that we have a great little emblem that we're using that's called BYO, logo, thank you, BYO Bag. Also, throughout the end of January and into the beginning of March, there are places that you can go to learn more about this, there are scheduled events, you can go to the website on the city to learn about where you can pick up your free bag. There's one per resident, and we've actually got some really cool bags coming out. When we talk about space technology, we have some ones coming and have astronauts on them that are pretty cool. So, if you have an opportunity to attend one of those events, you can get information on the website for that. I also sit on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. We will be meeting at the end of the month, and then the Regional Transit Committee will meet next week. So, as the mayor mentioned, we all sit on regional committees, and a lot of us are either staying on the same committees or have been appointed to new committees. So, we will start down at the left with Councilmember Michaud, and she can share what she's up to. Thank you.
Thank you. I have been appointed to the King County Regional Water Quality Committee, and my first meeting will be next month. We meet monthly, every first Wednesday of the month.
Councilmember Corr.
Thank you. I actually serve on three regional committees. I serve on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force, will be meeting on February 11th. I serve as Chair for Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council, and we will be meeting on February 27th. I also serve on King County's Growth Management Planning Council, and will be meeting on February 26th. Along this, along with this, I've been recently appointed to AWC, Association of Washington Cities Ad-hoc Equity Work Group Committee. And we, the goal for this is to provide direction to best implement board strategy, strategic plans, as well as strategy to review programs and initiatives to ensure equitable access to all members. And we have yet to decide on when that will be meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larmer.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will be having our first meeting of the year this coming Friday, January 10th. It'll be our full-day planning session, and this is where we'll discuss the legislative agenda that we'll be pursuing in the next year. And then following that, the following Friday, I will attend the first meeting of the year for the Affordable Housing Committee for King County as well. And so, I'll have reports on those at the next session.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I sit on the PIT Committee for Silence of the Association. Our next meeting will be in February. However, in January, I don't have the date yet, we'll be having an orientation for new members as well as old members. So, I shouldn't say old member, but people who've been on, on the committee for quite some time. So, I have the date for the next meeting, is it February? Oh, January? Is it January? Okay, okay. Got it. Also, I just recently got elected to be the Vice Chair of PIT. So, I will be the Vice Chair, and Chrissy Malachow, who is a, she's Samish. She will be the Chair of PIT. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, along with Council President Troutner and Councilmember Boyce. And the three of us sit on that board. We really didn't do much during the holidays, so our next meeting actually will be on the 15th, that's a Wednesday, up at Station 78 there in Covington. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. As far as arts liaison, Kent creates the identity program that is going right now. That's the theme of the art contest right now. That has been extended through the end of this month, through January 31st. There were some technical difficulties, so that has been extended. And remember, there is a $200 honorarium to each of the top five winners for that. And then remember, there's the A.J. Croce Concert coming up here on the 17th, as well as Seattle Rock Orchestra on the 8th of next month. And then I also serve as Vice Chair of the King Conservation District. We did not meet in December, nor did the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. We also did not meet. MID meets on the 23rd of January, and then on the 15th of January, KCD will be meeting.
All right, Madam Mayor, that ends our reports. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As you can see, your council is very busy making sure that Kent is well-represented. I am going to take one moment of personal privilege, forgot to do this under my report, and I would be remiss and not a good mother if I did not say happy birthday to my youngest son. He turned 20 today, so happy birthday, Derek. I'm positive he's at home watching this riveting council meeting, but just wanted to make sure that I did that. So, thank you for that. We are going to move on in the agenda, public hearing. We do not have one this evening, so we are going to move on to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of our audience to come up and bring their concerns or kudos to the council. We do have a three-minute time limit and a sign-in sheet up here with Kim. So, ask that you state your name and your city of residence for the record before you begin to speak. Kim, can you call our speakers, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four people signed up to speak, Nancy Simpson, Georgie Murray, Teresa Still, and Scott Larson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And Council. I'm Nancy Simpson. I'm president of the Kent Historical Society. And we brought a part of our Christmas decorations to you. We're not just taking our old Christmas tree down here to dispose of it, but we did something really special this year at the museum, which I thought, for those who didn't get a chance to come see it, I'll tell you about it. We had 12 Christmas trees that we decorated at the museum. And this one represents the tree that was upstairs in our Japanese area. And it's decorated with cranes. Now, if you know what the cranes represent to the Japanese community and to us, and so, we decided, well, if we're going to put this away, we should do something good for the cranes. So, the cranes are going to be leaving Kent. The cranes are going to Washington, DC with a number of other cranes that are being put together by groups throughout the United States. And this is to represent, let me get this right, it's going to represent the information about what's been, what has happened over many years with different groups in our country. And it represents something that it should bring joy to us, that we can recognize these people, these individuals throughout our country, especially the Japanese to begin with. And so, our cranes are going to be leaving Kent. And I just thought the city of Kent should realize the representation that they have with this small group of cranes that will go with the other 125,000 that are being given to this March, and that'll be coming up in June. So, we just want to make sure that the city of Kent realizes what the museum does for the city and who we want to represent and what, what it means to us.
Nancy, thank you so much. I appreciate you, all the work that you do at the museum, but coming and letting all of us know. We have such a strong history ties with Japan here in the Kent Valley and our, and our mostly Japanese farmers that were here during that horrible time during the war. And I am And I am, I am grateful for the work that the museum does around making sure that no one forgets.
No one should forget.
So, thank you.
And we have another event coming up in March, on March 1st. It's collaboration between the Lutheran Church Community, the community, the Auburn Buddhist Temple, and ourselves. And we are putting on a program that will also represent Japanese information. And more information will be coming out shortly. We're just getting that all pulled together. But again, it's Sunday, March 1st, and we'll be at the Lutheran Church.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm reminded, Saturday, we have our annual meeting. How could I forget that? And I hope that if you're able to, to please come. We have a program with Mike Evans, who is the head of the Blue Heron Canoe Family. And he is doing a wonderful program about the native peoples who lived in this valley to begin with.
Right. Thank you.
And Mike spent thirty years as a Kent firefighter. So, his roots are right here in Kent.
Nice connections.
So, come, come, come listen to him.
Eileen?
Yes.
Did you make all those cranes?
Did I make all of them? No, I did some of them.
Okay.
But as Nancy said, they will join 125,000 in June, which represents 120,000 people of Japanese ancestry, plus the 5,000 Latin Americans that were transferred to Texas as prisoners of war exchange, as well as the prisoners in the DOJ camp. So, they will be part of our tremendous movement. Yeah?
Good job.
Thank you.
Evening.
My name's Georgie Murray, and I live in Kent. I live on Fifth Avenue, on the south side of where the Roundabout's going to be. I'm here tonight to talk to you about some crime in our neighborhood. I, one year ago, November 20th, got to be subjected to that myself. My home was broken into. And, well, my mom's not alive, and the person took all the memories I have of my mom. So, I'm here to see, and I did talk to Chief Padilla. I was able to obtain a photo based on a declined credit card charge that I did hand over to the police. He was identified, and I did find out recently that he is in jail. But we need to have our neighborhood be safer. There is a house. I don't know the exact address. I tried to drive by tonight. The address is 208 West Crow, I believe. It's right across the street from the Kiwanis Tot Lot Number One. The house, I have been told, and you can sort of observe, there's a lot of people that are homeless, that do drugs, that are interesting characters. They may have had a tough life. I'm not judging, but I am saying that this house is allowed where people can go and do their drugs and take baths and showers. And it seems as though there's always a garage sale in the front yard. And there's another house that is on the following corner, one house down, that it's starting to have that kind of behavior also. I'm the block watch person. I tell people, call when you see suspicious behavior. So, I'm just asking, if there's anything we can do to help. I have people that have been broken in and robbed in my neighborhood that one has to stay at home because they're afraid of their home will be robbed again. I live with, my gate's all padlocked now. So, I am just putting it out there to you. And I'll also let you know, we have a lot of standing water on Fifth Avenue. And I've been told that it was the grate, and to make sure that cedar was, you know, cleaned off of it. And it's still standing there tonight, and I clean it for my neighbor.
I'm looking at Tim. He's giving me a thumbs up. We will continue to work on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. And you did, you said you had a chance to talk to Chief Padilla.
Yes, and we're going to communicate more. So, you know, I'm thinking positive. I realize that the police force is short-staffed. And as I told Officer Sergeant Padilla, we lost a great officer. And I realize that.
Thank you.
So, I mean, even if we can have some help with signs that say we report suspicious behavior, there are some old ones in our neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, and I'm willing to do whatever I need to do to help.
Thank you. It's definitely a team effort. I appreciate you coming down and bringing that particular house to our attention and just generally what's going on in the neighborhood. I have 100% confidence that Chief Padilla will be able to provide you with, with resources.
And I did also find out from the city, the codes, where they do the codes, that in our city, that you can have two garage sales a year. And this individual, actually, I dated and documented it because I feel like that's the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
She moved her garage sale to the other side of Willis. And I did call them, and you know, I did give them the date. So, that roving garage sale stopped there. But it's, she doesn't have signs up now, but I mean, it's also an eyesore to the community.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you again.
My name is Teresa Still, and I live in the city of Kent. And I've been dealing with the same drug house for over fifteen years with Chief Thomas, with, at the time, Assistant Chief Padilla. I have a list of, well, fifteen years' worth of notes from the police department and their officers on this drug house, Johnny Horn's house at 3015 South 259th Court. It has gone on, I mean, it literally has a drive-through drug. I mean, you can see, it's, it's a drive-through. They have, the drug dealers, or the buyers go straight to the window and buy. You can see it every day, all day. They stolen vehicles, shootings, seventy bullet casings, multiple people shot. This is in a residence with children and the school bus within two blocks. Needles, drugs, you can find on a weekly basis on the street. Our street sweeper doesn't even come down that block anymore, or it's a dead end. They don't even come and clean it up anymore, so it's basically all us. I have given videos of stolen vehicles to Officer Prusa, where they sometimes arrest people, sometimes they don't. Johnny Horn has not been held accountable. And when Thomas, when, I'm sorry, Mayor Cook was here, I guess they said that the ordinance, the nuisance ordinance was too difficult to, to hold homeowners accountable, and that's why they haven't been able to do anything. I've just, I mean, the officers have come complacent, I hate to say it. I will call 911. I will wait. I will see them drive on 30th, slow down, but they don't even turn down 259th Court to actually go and see the actual drug or the criminal activity. I have followed those officers over to the other neighborhood on 42nd Avenue and specifically asked why they failed to address the 911 concern. And they said, their, their quote was, "They were told to not pursue that house anymore." I mean, who has given that? I mean, it is crazy. That was, I mean, I have notes of which officers, I'm told by Westcott all the time, they have limited resources, and they just really can't deal with that house. I mean, these are our officers. If they feel that they don't, oh, or that this is a good one that I hear all the time, they arrest them one day and they're out the next. So, they don't have the support from our court systems to put these criminals in court. So, our officers feel like, what's the point? Well, we don't feel safe. We don't feel protected. I don't feel that I could even rent our homes out to people with children because, I mean, what kind of landlord would I be? I mean, I, I have parents begging, families begging to rent our home, and I say, you know what? I'll rent, rent you the home, but please, watch what's going on across the street for a while and see if this is really where you want your children. And then they make the decision not to. I had officers, we had two nuns in, in a house for many years. I had officers tell them to carry guns. I mean, two nuns. I mean, and it's just, it's, we need help. We need to address this property. Our neighborhood in 42nd Avenue now is getting our mail stolen, mailboxes, all kinds of issues with that. The same cars are going straight over to Johnny Horn's house. The U-Haul truck that is hanging out at Fred Meyer's all the time is at Johnny Horn's house, stealing stolen property all the time. I mean, it is creating criminal activity throughout your neighborhoods. This one house is. You can go there, you can watch it, you can see it, you can see these same criminals in your neighborhoods, their cars, stealing your mail, stealing from Fred Meyer's, and we have to get more people involved.
I will, tomorrow, you have my commitment, I will follow up with the chief and get up to speed on where we're at with this. It's, it's not okay, and that's not what we want in our Kent neighborhoods. I've got a whole list of questions given your comments tonight. And I know, we exchanged emails this morning, correct? And I will follow up.
Yes, and I can give you fifteen years of officers' names and their comments on this house. We need help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Scott Larson, and I live in the same area that this lady just spoke about. And I lived here most of my life. Kent is a good city, but it has a problem. In your mission statement, you, you want to have a safe place for people to live. We're not safe. We're under constant attack of mail theft, package theft, prowlers, burglaries. It's out of control, and I'm addressing the chief with these comments, too. We're tired of it. And, and as much kudos that are going around, I never heard one thing about crime tonight. And that's a problem. These need to be addressed, and you're failing the citizens of this city. These problems need to be addressed, and they need to be a priority. We're tired of listening to excuses. We're tired of phone calls from the police sergeant explaining why they're trying to deal with this stuff, but they're not making any progress. It's actually gotten worse. And so, we all, a lot of us are on this app called Next Door. And it's the demise of this city because we all know the second something happens now, and it's happening all the time. I was just at Starbucks the other day here in Kent, and one of the young ladies was telling me that works there that her bike was stolen right in front of the store. And it's the same group of people who ride around on their bikes that are all stolen, and they're just stealing stuff all over the city. Why can't the chief deal with this? What is the problem? Why are we failing the citizens of Kent? Why can't we deal with these problems? We, as a citizen, see these people all the time. We see the same cars, we see the same house. We see these problems, and it's driving us crazy why this stuff is not being addressed. I'm, I met Taco Time the other day. I, I know all these employees, and they tell me, yeah, a half hour ago, somebody walked into the store with a mask on, they were going to rob the place. But that person chickened out because there was a lot of people in the store, they turned around and ran out. This is every day. You can't go to a store, you can't go to Fred Meyer, you can't go to Lowe's, you can't go to Starbucks without crime happening right in front of your face, let alone us living in this city. I love the fact that we're bringing all of this positive influence to the city of Kent, blue origin, all this amazing stuff. But the problem is, is the crime is going to keep this stuff from being developed the way you want it. The citizens are tired of it. If people ask me that want to live here, say, hey, what do you think of Kent? What do you think the first thing out of my mouth is? The crime's out of control. It's got to be dealt with. And if, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if you need more funding for police force, whatever it is, it has to be a priority. The parks, the businesses, all the wonderful things that you're doing mean nothing if we don't feel safe here. And we don't feel safe here. That's the bottom line, we don't. You're failing us, and it needs to be dealt with immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, we're still, I tell you.
Kim, do you have contact information for all of our speakers from tonight? Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Oh, are you, did you sign in?
No, I didn't.
Okay. All right, go ahead, and we'll give your comments, and then if I could have you sign in, that would be great.
Hello, Dan.
My name's Dan Streifert. I hate to present you with another problem after everything I've heard tonight, and I know you're all very busy. But last year, the city of Kent signed on to the King County City's Climate Collaboration, the K4C agreement. This includes goals for reducing greenhouse gases relative to the 2007 levels by 25, 50, and 80% by 2020, 30, and 50. These ambitious goals are consistent with a Paris Climate Accord. In December, the Climate Action Plan Toolkit motioned, motion passed the King County Council. This motion directs the council to develop a toolkit aimed at helping local cities put together comprehensive climate action plans. With a toolkit, our local cities won't each have to invent a climate action plan, and yet each city can assemble a climate plan adjusted for its specific circumstances. The recent county budget allocated $85,000 for, to hire a consultant to work on this and work with the cities in developing this plan. Several of us from the city of Kent formed a Peoples for Climate Action subgroup for the city of Kent to try to help facilitate the, the work between the city and the county. The first part of that, that we're working on right now, is to develop a spreadsheet that lists the, the actions that the city has already taken that may contribute to, towards reducing climate, global warming. And to work on that, I've spent, several of us have spent a few weeks going through the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Document and sorting that out and putting it into a spreadsheet that I think has like twelve different categories. And each of the cities, each of the PCA groups in the climate action cities are working on similar spreadsheets right now. And the idea is to get those finished by the end of January so that they're available for this consultant to start working and coming up with kind of a master plan for the county. So, we're trying to facilitate that. I had, I sent the plan, what we'd had, the spreadsheet to Danielle Butzak yesterday morning, and she's spent a little bit of time trying to up, update the current status of these various actions. I know she hasn't got much time to spend on this right now. And before I went any further with this, I wanted to come to you and ask for, if we can kind of come up with a plan for how to, how to, how we can work together on this. The, the main thing is, we need to have a representative from the city that's working with this consultant so that you can get your ideas into this county action plan. And so, somehow, we need to come up with a person, identify whoever that person would be, and allocate some time and budget for them to work on that. Our group is willing to help facilitate this and volunteer, put in volunteer time in any way we can help with this process. So, I think the best thing, plan I could make at the moment is, if, if we can get together with you folks, either some council members or staff people or whatever in the next couple of weeks and, and kind of work on pursuing this and, and coming up with a plan.
This week, I will reach out to Danielle and touch base with her since it sounds like she's got a lot of this information and try and determine things like resources required, amount of staff time, that kind of thing. And then we can, we can brainstorm internally to figure out what resources we have available to dedicate to this, and I will commit to doing that this week.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, and then don't forget to sign in, please. Thank you. Okay, Kim, do we have any other speakers? There was nobody else signed up to speak. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a compilation of the work that the council... The consent calendar is a compilation of the work that the council has done at the past committee of the whole meetings, so all of the items have been brought forward. They have passed out of the committee of the whole without controversy and no council member being in disagreement with them, so then they move on to the consent calendar for final action. Uh, we have consent calendar items A through N. Council President Troutner, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve consent calendar items A through N with the omission of item number D.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. So that is a significant amount of work. I do always like to remind folks that it seems like a very quick action, um, but these are all things that have been presented on, deliberated about, and worked through, uh, at previous meetings. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number nine, other business, the purchase and sale agreement for the Naden South property. Joining us is Bill Ellis once again.
Hello again, as advertised. Just loading up the PowerPoint there. Thank you. And Christina Shook here as well is giving a handout on, uh, some of the important, uh, major deal points in the purchase and sale agreement. We talked about this, of course, back in December, um, and I spoke a little while ago about one key thing to note, that this is for authorization of the purchase and sale agreement, which is for signature but does not equal closing on the property. Uh, we would be entering into a new phase. The actual closing date would be March 25th, 2021, or within 30 days of obtaining all approvals. That means permits on our side, on their side, it means approval from Hilton, uh, or whichever is earlier. Um, the development agreement is a statutory process that would require a public hearing. Um, there are a variety of protections in this agreement for both the city and for the developer, but let me just back up a second and reorient everyone to this exhibit of the hotel property depiction. You saw this last in December. Just talk through what these shapes mean. Uh, the black box, uh, is not that. It's a WashDOT limited access area. That's where the right-in, right-out of, uh, for the state highway would occur, and that would be deeded to WashDOT, and that's us deeding to WashDOT. The purple area is there today, is the old Naden Avenue that we owe, and we own in fee simple, we purchased some years ago from Washington Department of Transportation. The green area is the north parcel frontage improvements, and that dotted line through the hotel property would be property that Braintree Development Group would purchase from us and then deed back to the city for future roadway. So, major things to consider for this development agreement include that Old Naden Avenue is purchasing for us in exchange for north parcel frontage improvements. The road that they would have to construct in the black box area, as well as within that dotted line, would be something that they would have to do by right, by the city, because it's part of our code process. The Hotel Development Group Braintree, uh, would have to build those things, and they would also have to, uh, secure franchise approval, which I talked about. They would have to keep to a mile set of milestones, uh, that we also have some responsibilities to. When downtown design review would, uh, occur, when would civil construction permits occur, uh, when would building permits occur? Um, we would have to, of course, receive a bond for them for the route improvements. So if they, let's say, have a permitted road, and for whatever reason they can't continue, we have money to complete said road, uh, to this distance, and, uh, we get to review their financing plan. So, what's left then, what isn't in the purchase and sale agreement is, and would be in the development agreement, and that will include at minimum, uh, the specific hotel and road design, um, the construction timeline, and then eventually the easement for the city for road. Just backing up to this, uh, you'll notice at the purchase price, there is a pretty specific number, 2.634660. Uh, that is, of course, also depending on final survey and lot line adjustments, as I discussed at, uh, last council back in December. Um, the sort of northern boundary line of the hotel property is not set. Uh, there could be, depending as we get through the design process, some adjustment of 10 feet or so that could result in a, uh, shift of square footage, um, but not a significant amount, uh, not a, uh, the property valuation, uh, the price for the property will still be at $28 a square foot. So, uh, I, since we met in December, there's only been one change that I think I'll have Christina speak to in section 5.7 of the purchase and sale agreement. Just back off here.
And I won't go into details, I'll just point out that on the second page of the handout, you can see, there's just one sentence that was a late negotiation on Friday afternoon after the council packet deadline, so we are recommending this change to the purchase and sale agreement. If you have any questions on it, it's just a clarification of when, when deadlines may be extended if a third party, like a WashDOT or Metro, there's a metro sewer line under Old Naden Avenue, if there's a third party outside of the city whose approval maybe took longer than anyone anticipated, we would grant an extension of the project schedule in Exhibit J, or maybe some other deadlines within the purchase and sale agreement.
Any questions for Christina or Bill?
One other, yeah. So, one thing to note is that we're working, or we need to continue to work, and Puget Sound Energy needs to continue to work with us about, uh, the infringement they have on our access rights in and around this area, crossing the trail, and for access to the neighboring sites. Uh, that's really critical to the design and, uh, that there is a deconfliction of the, uh, the interurban trail with the right-in, right-out. So working with them on our existing property rights and having them work constructively with us in a timely fashion will be very key to fixing, uh, to the optimal outcome for the city in terms of, uh, the hotel design and the, and the design of the road. So, um, that is a third party that is explicitly called out in the purchase and sale agreement and isn't called out in that section 5.7 change, but, um, is, uh, really important and I think a key part of what the next three months would be about.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, Bill, we've been, Puget Sound Energy, that's been going on for quite some time, right? So do we, uh, feel good about reaching agreement with them? I mean, it's just been going on and on and on and on.
We've, uh, well, there's been a few issues. We've had some progress earlier in 2019 in getting the Triangle property. There is continuing issues regarding, um, slope easement, uh, access rights that we have, uh, when we purchase these properties to get people across the trail and, uh, for neighboring property owners. And it's the second set of issues that I think are kind of, uh, waylaid at the moment, and, uh, we need to have Puget Sound Energy take a closer look and have a much stronger engagement on it. Uh, I know that they have, um, some intentions improving their substation, which is great for our project and for our neighboring, uh, property. It would be great for them to equally see the value in helping, uh, us out on the road and trail.
You didn't thoroughly answer my question, but...
Sorry.
So what, what we need to do to make this happen, though? I mean, do you feel good about we're going to make progress? I mean, I hate to see them kind of not make this work for us.
Yeah, I, I think it, it depends on what they do next in the next couple of weeks. I, I'm sorry if that's a little cryptic, uh, but I think very specifically, they need to come to an understanding of the overall benefit of the vision of the revitalization of this area and comprehensively look at the fact that they are interfering with our legal right to have access, and that they come to decisions about, um, design, fill of the trail, and, uh, what access they need to grant us, uh, and for future development in that area. Um, I'm trying to, there's a lot of technical information that I am processing that I'm trying to relay here, about, you know, level of three feet of fill versus, uh, swing lines of the power poles and the position of footings. There's a variety of things that I, I think a stronger engagement from their design team and from their operations people, uh, in reviewing our information would, uh, and in a timely fashion, relaying that to real estate and having real estate, um, move quickly and efficaciously on those would be very helpful.
We've made it very clear to them that we are under, um, some...
Are you involved with the leadership team on this?
There's, there's been communication.
Okay, all right.
There's letters.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Uh, Councilmember Michaud.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, do you know how much we owe on this Naden property?
Around, uh, $2 million remaining in the bonds.
For the whole thing or just this part?
Uh, for the whole site assembly.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? All right. Um, seeing none, then a motion would be in order. Councilmember Fincher, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a purchase and sale agreement with Hotel Management Services LLC, setting forth the terms of a sale and conveyance of a specified portion of the Naden Assemblage property owned by the city for the purpose of building a Hilton Garden Inn, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and economic and community development director.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Councilmember Michaud, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, all right, we've got a motion and a second. There is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. One more step closer to the end goal that we've all been working on for a very long time. All right, we do have a bid this evening for Armstrong well pump replacement. Joining us is Tim Laporte, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this particular, uh, pump, uh, is actually located just east of the Kent city limits, uh, very close to the, um, the Armstrong Spring, uh, well field. Is actually not too far from the, um, Home Devote that's out in the Covington area. Uh, that, uh, spring source was, um, built, uh, some time ago, and we use it to supplement, um, Clark Springs as part of our water source. The well, uh, well is 80 feet deep, and it was installed in 1989, so we've gotten 30 years' worth of use out of it. We feel like we've gotten our money's worth, kind of like my old car, but nonetheless, uh, that, that picture on the left has Randy Pulserbrecht, uh, one of our staff members, uh, and that is the, uh, actual pump, um, screen being pulled out. That's the intake screen on the left, being pulled out from 80 feet deep, um, after 30 years. And on the right, uh, we have, uh, Sean Ralph and a pump technician on the, on the left from one of our contractors. That is a multi-stage pump. Um, that would be the first stage, second stage, third stage, fourth stage, so now you're all experts on turbine pumps. Uh, at any rate, that thing spins around at about 1,700 RPM, um, and it has some problems. So again, we've gotten our money's worth out of it, and, uh, basically, uh, it's now time to replace it. In fact, this thing was actually slated to be replaced, uh, this year, but it went bad out just a few months before we were actually planning on bidding it anyway. So this is a scheduled replacement, uh, that we're now planning on doing. That is the, you can kind of see the danny line there in the, in the middle there, just for scale, uh, right there, but that is the actual screen, uh, what's left of it after 30 years. Um, it's quite common, we have a lot of iron, uh, in our water, which is very healthy, especially if you have iron for blood, but at any rate, it's very healthy, um, in terms of human consumption, but it als- also does create a little havoc with our, uh, equipment, especially after 30 years. So we bid this, um, pump replacement, and, uh, we do recommend awarding to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Gary Harper Construction. We did get two bids, but unfortunately, the, uh, other bidder did not properly fill out all of the, uh, information required, um, by our bid specifications, so we do recommend, uh, awarding to Gary Harper in the amount of $101,629. Again, this was budgeted, we were planning on doing it this year, uh, anyway, and, um, so it, uh, decided to go out on us just a few months before we were planning on replacing it. Uh, pump number two is about a 600 gallon per minute pump. Pump number one is about a 300 gallon per minute pump. Uh, these provide redundancy in our system, uh, which is very critical for water supply because it's not cool to run out of safe drinking water, even though we have a lot of rain. So now that you're all pump experts, if you would please award this, we'd sure appreciate it.
Any questions for Tim? All right, Councilmember Thomas, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move to award the Armstrong Well 2 Pump Replacement Project bid to Gary Harper Construction Incorporated in the amount of $101,629, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have reached item number 11 on our agenda, which is executive session. Council will be going into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. There, um, will be a vote, one vote at the end of the executive session. Um, we are anticipating about 10 minutes, so if I could kindly ask that council chambers be cleared, that would be wonderful.